I will call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 1st. No, 15th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Jake Pearson, Lisa Malkovich, Travis May, and Ned Hacker. I am Maren Patterson, and I am the Chair. Excuse, we have Commissioners Sue Wilson and Jeremy Lowry. From staff tonight, we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, Bryant Farnsworth, and Melinda Greenwood are with us. We want to welcome the public that is here. And we just ask that you take a moment to silence your cellphones. And if you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway. And if you would like to make a comment on any of the agenda items, we'll have you come up to the podium when it's time for that agenda item. We'll begin our, on our agenda with the approval of minutes. Have all the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from the July 1st meeting?
Yes.
And are there any changes or corrections that you would like made? We made one note in the, in the pre-meeting about something to be struck from the record. But if there are no other changes, then we, I'll call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the July 1st, 2021 minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have conflict of interest. Did any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any agenda item this evening?
No.
Neither do I. So next is our findings of facts. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the findings of facts for Jefferson Park Number 3 Residential Infill Subdivision?
Yes.
Any changes or comments on that?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the findings of facts for Jefferson Park Number 3 Residential Infill Subdivision as in the CUP request. I don't have an address, so.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, next. Agenda item number four, amendment to the conditional use permit to allow a commercial building at the Fashion Place Mall property located at 6161 South C Street. Is applicant here? Okay, great. We'll have our presentation by Zach. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. Yeah, this is a request for an amendment to the conditional use permit for the Fashion Place Mall to allow a new commercial building, which will house, propose to house two restaurant spaces. This is at 6161 South State Street, located here. It's currently a Morgan Jewelers, and I think it's been there since like the 70s. It's been there a long time, from what Susan told me when she did a little bit of research on it. It is in the CD zone. Eating places are allowed, they're permitted use. So typically, we don't have to take them through a conditional use permit process. But since the mall operates under a conditional use, we decided that it's best to do this as an amendment to that. So here, I thought I'd start with kind of existing conditions. This is what the mall looks like. It was too hot. I didn't want to get out of my car, so I just took pictures from my car. And didn't want to do that. And it's not a very pleasant place to walk in right now, sorry. But yes, there you go. So here is the proposed site plan. It's going to be taking over roughly the same footprint that already exists for Morgan Jewelers. I believe the building is a little bit bigger than Morgan Jewelers is currently. I think Morgan Jewelers is about 4,300, 4,200 square feet. This one is going to be 7,200 square feet to house both of those restaurants there. I'll also speak to the parking. Doing the parking analysis, it looks like overall, the mall will lose about 10 spots. But with almost 5,000 spaces, I don't think that's going to be a big deal. They do operate, I apologize, I don't remember exactly. Let me pull it up real quick. So they are required to have 4,473. And with the reduction, or with the loss of 10 spaces, they're at 4,870. So well, well overparked. So going on to the new building, these are a couple elevation pictures of what they're proposing to do. The Crack Shack is a fried chicken establishment. It's called Southern California Fried Chicken. I don't know what that entails, but it sounds good, so I'm sure I'll try it out. The other is Via 313. It's a Detroit-style pizza. I don't know if you guys have ever had Detroit-style pizza. It's delicious. I love it. It's kind of, I'm just gonna go off on a tangent.
Inform us, please.
Yeah, it's like the crust, and then there's cheese. At least what I had, it was crust, sauce, cheese, and then more sauce on top. And so it's really good. It's a really thick, deep-dish pizza. And Jared kind of explained it, and I read this on their site, too. The idea came from the auto manufacturing. The places where they, the trays that they kept the nuts and bolts and stuff, they used those same trays to then bake pizza. So they're a deep-dish type pizza, so it's really good. Sorry, I will go off that tangent now. But that's perfect. So a couple other elevations from the other sides. Also, a couple renderings here. Looks really cool. I really like the style of it. It's gonna be different for the mall. We don't have a lot of, of this kind of industrial look at the mall right now. And so with that, the planning, your planning staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the conditional use permit subject to the nine conditions in front of you. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Well, I know I already asked it in the pre-meeting. Is there any reason why the building couldn't be pushed closer towards State Street and eliminate the on-street parking there?
And I don't think you mean on-street parking, but the...
I'm sorry, eliminate the parking right up against the street, yes.
Currently, the CD zone doesn't have a, a parking or a site, a setback area that requires somebody to be pushed up against the, 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 the street. So I couldn't really force the issue. But it's definitely something to bring up with the applicant. So I encourage it. I think it would be great, especially with the Fashion Place West area. I think it would be a great opportunity to possibly pull that forward. This was just the application that we received at this time.
Sure.
Sure. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. We would invite the applicant to come up. If you would state your name and address into the microphone for the record.
So I'm Ted Ditas with McNeil Engineering, 8610 South Sandy Parkway. Just to clarify, I'm actually an agent for the applicant.
Great.
I don't know if I have anything to add to that. That's a pretty good summary. It is, the pizza's a deep dish. I think it's traditionally a square-style pizza, but...
Good to know.
That's, I don't know if I can offer anything else information-wise on it.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions of approval?
Yes.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't have any further information for us, then we'll have you sit down, and we'll open this meeting for public comment on this agenda item. And seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the Commission for any discussion or motion.
Well, I know I asked the question, so you know, I'll just, again, encourage you to consider that as you, as the mall properties continue to evolve, that you really do start to look to ways to incorporate. No, you're fine. I'm just, I'm monologuing. But just to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly, because the parking lot is, is difficult at times to get around in. And you know, I think there are a lot of transformations that are gonna take place on the mall property over the next 20 or 30 years. The other thing I'd encourage, the sidewalk that's proposed in the drawing really seems to be a sidewalk that goes to nowhere towards State Street. And quite frankly, humans are gonna take the shortest distance. So while it's cute to have a little jog, if there's no real purpose for it, I would just encourage you to just put a straight shot sidewalk over towards State Street.
Yeah, you can come to the podium if you would just once more state your name.
Sorry.
Ted Ditas, McNeil Engineering, 8610 South Sandy Parkway.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, there's about six feet of vertical slope relief from the east side of that site to State Street. So that little meander to the sidewalk is for ADA assessability to maintain the slope.
That's the perfect answer. Yep, perfect answer.
We talked about that in the pre-meeting. Thank you so much for answering that. Any further discussion or a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a new commercial building at the property address 6161 South State Street, subject to conditions 1 through 9.
Is there a second on that motion?
Madam Chair, I'll second that. Yeah.
Do you have a question before we...
I've got a comment. It's kind of out of line and wrong timing. But I was hoping that, just hopefully, Fashion Place Mall is focusing on walkability in the future. We touched on it, didn't really give a chance to speak to it. Nothing's gonna change tonight, but just hopefully you're thinking about it.
That is a good comment. I have a motion from Commissioner Hacker and a second from Commissioner Malkovich to approve the amendment for the conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a new commercial building at the property address 6161 South State Street, subject to the nine conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Moving on to our Zone Map Amendment, Agenda Item Number 5 for the property 1079 East Vine Street to change from A1 Agricultural to R18 Low, Single Family Low Residential. Is applicant here? Wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Like you said, this is an application for a Zone Map Amendment, 1079 East Vine Street. It's just a little bit, wow, east of 900 East. It is currently in the A1 zone, and as you can see, all around it is mostly A1, even though these lots here are definitely not one acre, which is what the A1 typically requires. At some point in the past, and I apologize, I don't know the dates, the property to the west of the subject property rezoned to R18. And in the larger context, if you were to zoom out a little bit further, most of the area is R18 with a little bit of RM10 down here as well. So the future land use for this property is low-density residential, which does include A1 and the R18 zone. Since we did find that typically along this area here, and like I mentioned earlier, just, just seconds ago, as you zoom out, it's R18, we figured we could support this zone change. The applicant, from what I understand, is, would like to sell the back half of their, their property to their east, the east neighbor for potential future development or something. I don't really know at this point. It's not really relevant. So did take a picture, a couple pictures. Again, it was too hot. I didn't get out of my car, so you get it from the side of the road. Looks like it's just a cute little yellow house. And I originally was just gonna be even lazier and take a picture from Google Street View, but that didn't have the nice sidewalks and rebuilt Vine Street. So I was like, I'm gonna go out and take a picture. So I'm really chatty tonight, if you can't tell. So with that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the proposed change from A1 to R18. Any questions for me?
No.
Thank you so much.
All right, if we could have the applicant come to the microphone and just please state your name and address for the record.
I am an agent for the applicant. My name is Randy Krantz, and the address 5330 South 900 East.
Great. Thank you for being with us. Is there any additional information that you would like to share with us regarding this application?
Now, at the present time, the person that's buying the back half has no plans to develop. They're just gonna increase the size of their lot. It, everything around there is R18, and there's only three properties that are A1 that are left there. And your master plan shows R18, which is what you probably want anyway. The A1 allows for horses, so I think you're down to the last three pot... Well, one of those is now all commercial. It's got the bed and, it was not the bed and breakfast, but the girls' school. And they'll never get horses on that now that they've put the other buildings. So there's only one other possible place that could, and this would eliminate one of those.
Yes, that's true. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. I will open the, this meeting for public comment regarding this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it up to the Commission for any further discussion or a motion.
I had one, one discussion. It's not extremely important, but made it's curiosity. The house and the garage that's on the property looks like it's not, you wouldn't really be dividing the property in half from the aerial view. It looks like the house and the, assuming garage behind it takes up more than half the property. So are they selling, are they dividing it in half, or are they selling a smaller piece in the back?
0.54 on the original one. It still maintains all the setbacks and requirements that were required within the zone for the garage and everything.
I don't know if you can hear on the recording. That's what I was getting at. He said it's not...
Slightly less.
Back part slightly less, but it still maintains the setbacks required on the existing home. Great. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the requested amendments to the zoning map designated for the property located at 1079 East Vine Street from A1 Agricultural to R18 Low Density Single Family.
I'll second. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nate and a second by Commissioner Malkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for their requested amendment to the zoning map designation for other property located at 1079 East Vine Street from A1 Agricultural to R18 Low Density. Is there any discussion on that motion? Then we can take a vote.
Mr. Nick?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Yes. So motion passes and moves forward to the City Council. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. All right, our next agenda item is land use text amendments for the mixed-use zones. Exciting.
Thank you for having me here tonight. This is, there are several text amendments listed here. And we can, we can talk about those in just a second. And I want you to feel free to ask questions as we go along. We had the good discussion item last time we were together as a planning commission. And so I prepared some slides to talk further about those same issues. But if you have questions as we go, I want you to feel free to ask them, and then we can talk more at the end as well. But this text amendment, so these, these proposed amendments do affect Chapter 17146, 168, and 170, the mixed-use zone, the TOD zone, and the MCCD zone, as well as the proposal of two new chapters that will be taking up spaces that we'd held in reserve in the past. So 17162 would be centers mixed use, and 17164 would be village mixed use. So it's kind of, to start out, we ought to talk about what we're, what we're doing here, and just to make sure everyone understands. The TLUR, commonly referred to as a moratorium, we don't like that word generally, but the temporary land use restriction was put in place in February. And it was put in place to allow the city to consider some things that had come up as concerns as the, as reviews for, for changes to mixed-use zoning were considered by the Planning Commission and the City Council. And those concerns mostly revolved around parking, the residential densities that the, that the current, the mixed-use zones that we just talked about, MCCD and MU and those, the densities that they allowed and the parking that they required. And then also, commercial requirements have been a consideration for a number of months with us, with developers, as well as with the Planning Commission and staff. And then other design considerations like buffering, landscaping, open space. And there were some other things that we put in there as well. So we wanted to talk about all of those things tonight, but the principal issues are those. And you'll see some similarities in the drafts and the changes that we proposed among the different zones with those different items, but some, some slight differences as well. So the existing, the existing mixed-use zones, you can see on this little map here. This is the TOD zone on the north end of town at the track station, Murray North Track Station, commonly called Fire Clay. The brighter orange here is the downtown zone, the MCCD. And then this larger orange area is the mixed-use zone, which we have proposed to rename the Murray Central Mixed Use, or MCMU. I want to come back to that in just a second, because these are the zones that exist. And we did need to talk about changes to residential densities and parking, et cetera, for those zones to make them appropriate for the areas that they're in. But they are in areas that are kind of traditionally viewed as mixed-use areas, near transit stations, downtown, in the downtown RDA area, et cetera. Those kind of areas are traditional, good areas for mixed use. But where, where we wanted to talk about the new zones, as we received applications, as the retail market changes, as, as the way that the world approaches those situations changes, we get requests to add mixed-use zoning to older commercial areas in other quarters further out from the center of town, away from transit opportunities, or as good a transit opportunities anyway. And our thinking was that we, we create these two new zones, one of them a little heavier, that CMU zone, and we'll talk about that. And one a little lighter, the Village Mixed Use Zone, or VMU, and tie them to the general plan. In 2017, when the city adopted this general plan, we identified these areas that you can kind of consider as areas of change, or areas where we ought to consider different things. On the future land use map itself, it tags some, sort of the biggest ones as community nodes and neighborhood nodes. This map is the small area plans map. There are three or four different maps in the plan that identify these areas. The framework map identifies it in two different chapters, but this is the most concise. So I've used it as the example. Regional centers in blue, so those will represent areas where there's a lot sort of heavier commercial activity, larger shopping centers, et cetera. City and retail centers, you're gonna see those at intersections, small intersections, but intersections of collectors. So carrying significant traffic. And they're usually, at least partially developed, as sort of neighborhood services, grocery stores, gas stations, some restaurants, and that kind of thing. So you can see, it's easy to identify the corridors on this map. 9th East, State Street shows up very well, 53rd South. You're gonna find that these areas of change are intersections on corridors, and that's kind of the first consideration. Also, these little nodes here are the BRT station villages. There's a UTA and UDOT plan to put a bus rapid transit line down State Street in the near future, and that would have obvious kind of points where we'd want villages or areas where there could be some services for those offs and ons, those boardings and lightings on that service line. And then also, clearly, obviously, the transit nodes. These are the three stations in Murray City. Fashion Place West, Murray Central, and North. Of course, in those areas, we already have mixed-use zones dotting those areas, with the exception of Fashion Place West, which has remained industrial, et cetera. But that's another question. Let me move from that to why we would consider these areas. And this is just, this, these graphics come from a, the sprawl repair manual. They have manuals for that kind of thing. You can buy them at AutoZone. This is an intersection of corridors, an intersection of collector streets. And it's just kind of showing you the illustration of the way that development has been done. And it results in these parking lots fronting the street, et cetera. And over time, as you allow mixed uses to come in, you can get improvements and changes, and eventually fix that area so that it becomes a more viable node, a more walkable area. So mixed use produces these, these more pedestrian-oriented areas. They're not entirely pedestrian-oriented if they're outside of the, the transit opportunities like the stations, but they are more pedestrian-oriented than others. This is an example of a shopping center redeveloping over time. These things, obviously, as you look at these kind of graphics, this has been included for a reason. These things don't happen immediately. Travis mentioned in the previous review, over 20 or 30 years, we're gonna see a lot of changes to Fashion Place, and that's not an inaccurate timeframe. We might start seeing changes in five to 10 years, but an overall transformation of an area does take a long time. Multiple applications, multiple iterations. But the codes need to be in place to do that. So the mapping really provides a way in the general plan for us to look at what areas might be appropriate for mixed use as a kind of a first line of inquiry, right? Beyond that, we proposed in the VMU and CMU zones that we find as a, as a city, as a commission and a city council and a staff, that any application we're reviewing and saying yes or no to be reviewed against these kind of standards, these goals. Will, by, by instituting a mixed-use zone in this area that has previously just been CD zoning or CN zoning, or whatever it might have been, will it result in high-quality redevelopment of commercial property? Will it retain or rehabilitate the commercial use of significant portions of that property? Would it increase local access to commercial services for in-project residents and their surrounding neighborhoods? Will it promote greater varieties of housing options within Murray neighborhoods? Would it promote opportunities for lifecycle housing and moderate-income housing? Would it provide increased walkability on that site and in the, and then, and result in more connections in the neighborhoods? Would it create and contribute to a sense of place and community in that area? And would it result in improved conditions for buffering and transitions for residential uses? It needs to, any application ought to meet five of those eight at least. That's just the, kind of a basic standard to kind of give us guideposts to say why we're considering it. Lisa, did you have a question?
Ask questions, okay. No, you're letting me wait.
Sure, anytime.
We refer to these a couple times, and it's a nice list. I have a couple questions about, a couple things on the list. Might be, I just didn't see it. Do we define high-quality redevelopment of commercial property somewhere?
No. I mean, I don't have any quantified standards for what's high quality versus low quality, no. I just have to feel your way through that.
I don't know. I just, if we have guidelines of things for the people to choose through, they need to choose at least four or five of these. I like, just leave it undefined as a little... What I might consider high quality, you might say is junk.
And I guess that's, that's a good question. And my answer is that it's their argument to make. If we don't feel like as a city that where they're proposing to do this could result in high-quality redevelopment of commercial property, then it doesn't meet that tag. It doesn't have to meet all of these. They're not standards. They are goals that ought to be met, and you're not gonna be looking at a project. Again, this is, we're still back at square one, where we're talking about implementing a zone that isn't there right now. So what I'm going for in this is for you guys as a commission and the council, as the council, to be able to say, yes, we can answer yes to some of these that by, by allowing you to do mixed use instead of just to keep trying to redevelop your gas station and grocery store, or whatever it might be, it'll result in some of these things that are good things in general. And high quality, I can't really define that, but you know. I didn't want to say low quality, so I chose to say high quality.
Maybe it's better quality.
Better quality than the...
You know, you see a strip mall, right? So if the top photograph here on the right, a molly kind of area, but lots of, of parking, kind of like the strip mall. So strip mall would be kind of lower quality, and anything better than that would be better quality. Definition of high quality, I mean, you can question what that is, argue, debate what high quality is.
I appreciate what we're trying to do. Yes, I just felt like it's extremely subjective, because like I get, like I said, what I feel is really classy. You might think I'm ridiculous and it's trashy. I don't know.
No, I have that same problem, believe me. I think it's classy.
And then I see where you're going with it, what you're trying to do.
It's really a betterment. Would it result in a better, in a better development than what's there currently? Or not just what's there currently, but what could be redeveloped under just commercial zoning? Will adding residential to this add value, without seeing it quite that simply? That's what we're trying to go for here. If there's a better way to say it. Maybe would it result in better development than what's existing? I can...
Well, I like how you just said add value.
You can reword that a little bit. I like that.
It's still subjective, but, and then when you said creating, number eight or nine, create and contribute to a sense of place and community. Sounds wonderful. Can you give me what that means a little bit?
Yeah, and I think most of them could do this, because our standards for, for development of bringing... The best way to create a sense of place is to bring people to it, and you bring people with that mixed use. So almost all of them are, there're gonna be some base ones that you could almost always argue they're gonna make it. There might be cases where you're talking about an area where you don't want to bring people in, because it's a, I don't know, I can't conceive of every opportunity. But I think most of them would meet that standard. You might give that as a given, and then you have to find others where you have to make your arguments to us as a city that this is a good idea for us. And we ought to be able to check off some of these boxes and say, yeah, we can see why this is a good idea. But they're not, they're not standards that could be measured really accurately. But with zone changes, you're making, you're making decisions that are not quite so tied to rules. So we can be a little more open with our thinking about it. So we want to leave them a little bit open, a little bit subjective, but reasonable.
Can I make a comment regarding this? As I read through these, doesn't the zone itself, by rezoning to whatever zone we're talking about, it checks these boxes automatically, does it not?
Not always.
Not all, not all of them, but five of them. Not all of them, but five of them.
Five of them, sure. The better ones, like, I see where you're going, I think. In most of these areas, yeah, you should be able to, you should be able to argue to us why this would work. And there's going to be, there's going to be like a next level of considering things. If we rezone you, you still have hoops to jump through. You still have traffic analysis and parking analysis to do, et cetera. But that first line of whether it should be considered or not, yeah, most of them should be able to make that argument. And if the particular property can't successfully make five of those arguments, then that's pretty lame, and it should fail that test. But most of them, in these areas of change, will not fail those tests.
I think how it's written, I think you could put a zone anywhere in the city, doesn't matter where, even outside these zones. And by definition, it's going to check, I think, five of those criteria as I read through them. Like, is it going to make it more walkability if the zone tells us it has to be more walkable? You know, has to be more walkable, yes. So that box is checked, right? So...
But I think if you apply it to a, you know, let's take the ShopCo property. To apply this to the ShopCo property, just by definition, this is going to make that better. But if you apply it to the neighborhood just right over here, to the, you know, just east of State Street and 4800 South, into that back neighborhood, are you going to necessarily improve that neighborhood? I don't know that you're going to improve that neighborhood.
No, but I bet there's five others that you could check the box on, is what I'm saying.
Potentially, but...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, and that's, it's not intended to be, like we were just talking about with Lisa, it's not intended to be a real strict standard. It's, they're kind of guideposts for us to say, to identify and think critically, at least about why we're saying yes to something and some project.
I guess my concern is, is if we check five of these boxes, that doesn't necessarily mean we should do a zone change. But I think that it may, people may think that because we checked five of the boxes, we should do it.
It also doesn't mean that you have to. I mean, zone changes are, what's the word, discretionary things. I keep, all I can think is arbitrary, and that's not the right word to use, because Bryant's here. So discretionary is the word, and they are still discretionary. I don't know, we could consider other things to add to it. But I think that my main point was saying that if you, if you are, for example, just outside of one of these, like we said, this mapping is to give us a first line of consideration. But it wouldn't preclude you from coming in and saying, well, I'm just outside of that, and I think I'm good enough. And I could see, I could consider situations, or conceive of situations, where you couldn't get five of those, a majority of those, in an area that was outside enough of one of those identified points of change. To say that promoting a greater variety of housing options, yeah, you're probably going to be able to do that. But is there, that's our first guidepost. But is there a reason to do that in that particular area, or is it needed in that area? And remember, it's not just would it do this, it's would it do it better than what's already there? So if you're talking about rezoning, what we've got already is RM15 somewhere to VMU. Maybe it makes sense, but maybe it doesn't. Maybe it wouldn't provide any of these things that can't be provided already by RM15. So it won't be difficult or impossible in every situation. But there are situations, I think I could conceive of, where we would say no, based on not making all of these.
And my initial concern was, well, first, I was a little concerned that a few things weren't clearly defined. And then I was a little concerned that there's four items that everybody's going to go for. And once you meet those four items, you kind of meet some of the others. But now that you've clarified, it's not really a requirement, it's a direction and a suggestion, then it's not as significant as I thought.
It's to provide easy findings to reference and a way to kind of consider the applications in a framework, as opposed to just saying, well, what do we think? That's really all it is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
And come back to that if we need to as well. So with that as a background, let me talk through the center's mixed use just really quickly. This, the center's mixed use, the parking is based on bedroom counts. It does assume a pretty good mix of commercial, based on the areas where we think this would probably be most appropriate. Center's mixed use is going to be a little more intense than village mixed use. And it's going to have a better, a better mix of joint parking. It's going to have commercial that, it's going to have more commercial with more parking that can be used in tandem with that residential. So its parking standards are based on bedroom counts, but they are a little lower than the VMU. The base residential density is 35 units per acre, with possible increases to 40 and 45. And then that increased density is tied to some factors. This graphic I chose just because it seems likely, this looks a lot like State Street to me, and the kind of areas that we might be asked to consider that zone for. The residential density in the CMU zone, again, these are the additional. So it starts at 35. If you want to go to 40 units per acre, you need to do something to get to it. So that base density is the density. To do anything different, you have to provide certain things. One difference between the CMU zone and the VMU zone is that one of the things you can do to provide, or to get extra density, residential density, is have more commercial than you're required to have. That may not be, that might be kind of the first go-to item on projects that come in on State Street. They might have more commercial than they, than they need naturally, or might be able to provide additional commercial because they have such good visibility commercially. But again, there's other things you can do. There's affordable housing options and open space and project amenities. Let me talk a little bit about village mixed use, and we can come back to some things if we need to. It does have higher parking requirements than the CMU zone, based on what we just talked about. You're not going to have as much commercial, probably, in areas that go village mixed use. You might, but it's not, it's not a guaranteed. And so the parking requirements are a little more stringent. You're also probably likely to be further out of the core of the city where you're going to have higher bedroom counts. So we're likely to see, that's where you're going to see more, your lots of twos and even some threes, and four-bedroom townhomes and that kind of thing in the village mixed use area. The base residential density is lower, 25 units per acre, with increases to 30 and 35. And those reductions, and this is different than the CMU. In the CMU zone, there is no method to reduce the required commercial. The assumption being that you'd probably be looking at these areas that are regionally, commercially significant. There's no reason really to reduce the commercial that we're providing on the Fashion Place Mall site, for example, or near the Fashion Place Mall, or anywhere in the State Street corridor, really. However, in the, in the village mixed use zone, that can be a little trickier. It's going to be in more of the outlying areas. And there might be some times when we want to be able to let someone look at reducing their commercial, but not for nothing. So we'll get to that in just a second. In the village mixed use, the residential density, like we said, is 25. You can get to 30 and 35 based on doing additional things. The two choices being, in this case, just open space amenities and affordable housing, with the lack of providing additional commercial as a way to do it. It was a comment from a council person, I believe, during the review that we had, that with them, that they'd like to see, especially in these outlying areas, a little more incentive for affordable housing options instead. So we removed any additional commercial from this, feeling like it was less appropriate, anyway. Giving people just kind of two choices. Provide some affordable housing, and God mentioned it, planning commission as well. So if you can do affordable housing, this, it's a good option to do it and get your density up to 30 units per acre. It ought to be for something.
Mr. Hulke, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So one, I need to make sure I say that I'm really impressed with your work. And like I said, this is a dissertation. And I apologize, but I think if I interrupt you, you'll keep your line. I thought if I don't say it, I'll completely forget.
Just wave your hands, because I don't have my glasses on. So you're all kind of a happy blur. So make a little motion, I'll be able to see you.
So I promise, I read a lot of this, but it's really dense. And so there's some things I've read, I probably, I'm asking something I know, but I can't quite remember. I really appreciate that you put parameters, with minimum and max, and things you can do to get the max. It's a good job. Parking, is it, in the VMU and the CMU, is it only based on bedrooms? Or is it bedrooms and commercial use?
Well, there's commercial parking as well. And the commercial parking in your, is in your tables. I didn't include it in the tables here because what had been the biggest concern for everyone had been the residential count. So the commercial is based just on the mixed-use standards that we'd used before. And that tied in, it matched pretty closely with the ULI, the Urban Land Institute numbers that we got from a study that was done. So I left the commercial numbers mostly alone and just added the mixed-use ones to these two zones. So you're not going to see a big difference in the VMU and CMU with commercial parking. The difference is only in the residential.
Okay. And then the second question is, who, where's my page? I wrote this somewhere. Who is monitoring and forcing the affordable housing? Who's, and how do we keep track of that?
That would, that would be me. I'm kind of the point person for moderate-income housing, for the plan that we have to do every year, the report that we have to do every year now for the state. So in these projects, when they come in, let's say that they choose to do, let's say a project comes in and chooses to go to 30 units per acre, based on that 10% requirement. So it gets, it gets a little tricky, and we're jumping ahead. But I'll jump ahead and we'll get back to it again, too. In these zones, the way to move forward with a project is with a master-site plan agreement. So that master, if they're choosing to use this, and it would memorialize their residential density. So to use that 10% affordable housing to get to it, they have to provide 10% at 80% or less, and monitor that, make sure the people that are renting those units, or leasing those units, or buying those units are at those levels. So every year at business license renewal, I can ask for the data. And there won't be too many of them for me to be able to do that, too. And it's just part of my job.
Because I can see upfront how it'd be straightforward. And 10 years from now, it'd be so confusing.
Right. And this is, the great thing about this is that we have, for example, we have one, one or two little projects that have been done over the years, that had used the residential infill bonus density, or the residential bonus density, and they did affordable units to do it. One unit out of their 10 or something was affordable. And they're supposed to give us data every December and show that they're still in that. And we have to ask for it every year. And when I'm gone, Zach's gone, Melinda's gone, whoever's gone, that might get lost. And then that unit probably goes to market rate when no one's begging them for it every December. But with these, the benefit is that there's, there's an agreement on file. That's recorded. That goes with that property. Somebody new buys it, that's in their title report. You have to have these units, this 10% are tagged as whatever 80% is at that moment. And we already define that 80% as tied to the Salt Lake County median income, so...
And what's the consequences if they come to you in December and they've already set up their units per this system, and they only have 8% of their units reserved for household incomes?
Yeah. Then, then we don't renew their business license and start fining them every day for operating without a license. So they, there's ways to make them comply. If this were, if we were a larger city and we were going to be doing this for 150 projects in the next five years, I'd be worried about tracking that compliance. And we'd probably, well, let's be honest, we'd probably just make interns do it. But you don't like to do that. Interns should have good experiences, just one thing. But that's what we would do. So when they tell you there's an intern, it's out there. They already know this. They're already aware.
Can I ask a related question?
Sure.
So is it possible, though, that these, I don't know what you call apartments, could individually sell to people, and they would not be owned by a company?
Sure.
And if that happens, and there's no way to enforce this, correct, other than initially?
The agreement, the agreement, the agreement binds successors and assigns. So even if an individual who's rich enough to want to own a complex of 300 units does it, that individual is still tied to that agreement.
I mean, what if they changed them into condominiums, sold each individual unit off separately?
That's a great question. And you wouldn't be able to do that with that kind of agreement, so...
Okay, so they could not do that. They couldn't, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Would catch that.
We're not all of the units, anyway.
Can I ask one more question? It just kind of alluded me through everything. So let's say, regardless of what zone we're talking about, I own a 15,000-square-foot piece of property, and I want to put an eight-plex on it, and I'm not on a principal street. Can I do that without a commercial component?
No, for a couple of reasons. You're on a principal street, so no. And for the second part, you're only 15,000 square feet. And in these zones, we should be looking at three-acre projects and more. So that's one of the other guiding principles that's in the purpose statement. If we're not, and I didn't include that in the slides, but if you, if you read the VMU and CMU zones, they'll tell you that one of your issues ought to be, and we'll, we'll be tracking this as staff. People that come to you with a 15,000-square-foot lot and want to rezone to VMU or CMU, we will recommend against, for the time being.
But they could rezone to RM15 or a different zone.
Well, so, but what about like, future land use map, 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road? Our future land use map has changed. We already assume that they're going into these new zones. And then someone comes in and asks for that zone change, and then later comes in and asks for this project. You're going to just say, no, you can't build a residential standalone building on a non-principal street because we don't want it here.
And a non-principal...
Non-principal street.
I would assume that in 15 years, it will be having a different conversation. My hope is that the three-acre deals that we go through in the next five to 10 years will create enough framework that we'd be able to do infill stuff. And we're frankly interested in doing an infill housing ordinance as well. And that would be outside of this. So there may not be a need for you to want VMU zoning or CMU zoning to do that in the next three years.
Okay.
There's a whole other track.
But we see certain areas of the city being re-zoned on the future land use map into these new zoning elements we're seeing, and...
With that conversation in the work session about the mapping and how it's kind of, there's some ambiguity there. In the next update of the general plan, we can tighten that up.
Right.
And I think this will function for a couple of years until we're ready to tighten up those maps. And we'll have a map that identifies VMU and CMU. We'll have a better idea of what we're looking at then, too.
But you're really looking for core projects to move this forward before we really make those changes.
Yep. And I think that's what we'll see for the next three years, at least.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, everybody. Thank you. And this, that's exactly what I wanted. Zach told me I had too many slides. He was right. Too many words.
Zach, you were right.
Too many words. Let me, let me go from, let me go to the reduction of commercial. Yeah, I'm going to go to the reduction of commercial. So again, in the VMU zone, there is a methodology to allow a developer to come in and say, well, I want to do this, but maybe I want to do, I have issues and I want to do less commercial than you typically calculate and require. So every residential project, every mixed-use project requires commercial as well. You can do just a commercial project in mixed-use zoning, and even in these zones, in the VMU and CMU, there are uses that would allow you to do just commercial. But if you want to do a mixed-use project that has residential components, you have a commercial component requirement. And we figured out by saying 50% of your frontage on principal streets for a 40-foot depth, and we calculate that. Most of the, most of the projects that would come in and CMU or VMU zoning would probably be horizontal projects, I think, just because we're pretty much built out. If we were a green fields area with empty properties, we'd be looking at different zoning configurations. But right where we are, we're probably going to be looking at horizontal mixed use. So we're going to be calculating, you know, say, 15,000 square feet of commercial. And because of whatever reason, this particular developer looks at that situation and says, well, I can't really do 15,000 viable square feet of commercial, but I could do 10. So I'm going to look for that first level of reduction and try to get to it. And if, if I can't do the commercial, or I don't feel like I can, then that developer, that project, needs to provide us something instead. Either affordable housing, or additional amenities and more open space. To make the project still be, to make the project still viably meet those kinds of goals for compact, walkable, vibrant neighborhoods, neighborhood connections, et cetera. And those kinds of trade-offs are only going to increase that and fill the void that's left by not having commercial draws to the property from outside. Does that make sense? You're going to see that in this zone, and then also in the MCMU West sub-district, where those are the only two areas where we would allow reductions in the commercial.
Can I ask a question about the slide? So the public availability to the open space is that...[1626.05] So we're not saying that they need to make any of the amenities publicly available? So if they do tennis courts or anything, they don't have to make those available? Just open space is the only thing that will have to be available for public access?
Let's say, for example, they're building tennis courts and they want to make them publicly available to get there. I would count that. But it's more likely that the open space trails along the creeks, trails through the project, et cetera, those kind of things. If they open those to the public, don't gate their stuff off, then that would make it.
So if they built tennis courts and said, we're going to let these be publicly available, that would count for the open space percentage?
Yes, I think that could. So and I know it seems, it's less likely, but I could conceive of a project coming in and saying, we're going to build, we're building a park already, and we need to do this to get to a reduction. We're going to make it a park that just kind of joins our mixed-use development, the residential portion of it, to this neighboring neighborhood area and allows them access to it. And that way, then it becomes a neighborhood park. And we are woefully inadequate in pocket neighborhood parks.
And Hamlet tried that in Bullion and was turned down by the neighbors, which surprisingly enough.
So you'd have to get approval. You'd have to get approval to make that one work. And it sometimes can be harder.
That's intriguing to me, though, because I'm not sure, I mean, I think of the 4800 South cross from the fire station, the Talon back there, where the fish used to be. Open spaces, like in that, I just describe it usually open to the public, just not used by the public much because you'd have to walk down your street around and down through the condos to use the little grill in the park there.
And people don't, people aren't comfortable doing that. The likely candidate for open space in this is our trails, walking trails. But I would suggest, too, in some neighborhoods, dog parks. If a good-sized dog park was built in the project, if there was one near me, God willing, I'd be at it. Well, or somebody that's under my command would be at it today, getting that animal some exercise. But yeah, I could, there are projects, there are amenities that will be more useful for this than not. And if it's, it'll have to be a good fit. So you have to find the perfect balance and say, well, this is a good fit from where it's not. And if you can't, here's the bottom line, I'm going to sound harsh, but the bottom line is if they can't do that, if they can't provide, if they want to get to that level, but they can't do the things to get to it, c'est la vie, that's just it. Then you just provide the commercial. And the only conceivable place where I said you have to do commercial with your residential, and the only time you don't is when you're not on a principal street. So just for clarification. So it won't work for everybody, but it doesn't need to. It needs to just, what we wanted to do was create opportunities for people to move forward with projects that were meaningful even when there were challenges with them. And trying to anticipate them is more art than science. So that's where we are. Good questions. Thank you. So residential parking in the CMU and VMU, and we just mentioned that we didn't include the commercial here because it's just the mixed-use standard that we've applied, and no one was really uncomfortable with that as we met with folks after the TLUR went into place. Again, the parking in the CMU, you're going to see slightly less requirements, although it has been tied to bedroom counts. And this is, to be clear, this would mean that when you come in with the project, you tell us how many three-bedroom units there are and two-bedroom and singles and whatever. And we count that up specifically for those bedroom counts, and you get it. You might wind up, although it says 2.5 for three bedrooms and up, you've got studios in there, too. Your overall count might wind up being something like 1.9 or 2.1, just depends on you. So if you're the developer and you're doing the project and you have a problem with how much parking you're being required, well, then reduce your bedroom counts. There's a built-in way to do this and alleviate that problem. In the VMU zone, you're going to see them slightly higher, about 10% on average. Although that one bedroom, that makes up the bulk of a lot of really transit-oriented ones, we left at 1.5, just like it is here. No extra in that because if you're doing one bedroom, those are the units that Public Works and Engineering and everybody felt like were, and planning included, felt like were the same across the board. One-bedroom units don't generate more parking regardless of where they are than they do in that downtown area. So you're going to see 1.5 for residential one-bedrooms in both of these zones. So anyway, any questions about the parking at this point? Okay. Where does mixed use belong? And that's what really we've been talking about. And it belongs anywhere. But I'm going to be honest, this slide was supposed to get deleted. Okay. It was originally, it was originally at the front of all of that conversation, and then I felt like it was useless. So I was going to give it a fake try there, but I'm just not up to it tonight. The next part of this discussion is how do you do all of this? And we alluded to this when Lisa asked her question. Master site plans are required for anything with three acres or more in all the other zones. And it makes sense in this zone, too, as we start with bigger projects, three acres or more, until we're ready to do infill stuff. Master site plan should be required for everything in the VMU and the CMU zones. What that means is that an applicant making an application for master site plan has to provide us a traffic impact study, a parking analysis, an adequate public utilities and facilities review, and potentially a public services review for other things, police and fire. We want to make sure that everyone has a crack at this to make sure that we're not missing anything. Hopefully, what happens is the parking analysis that comes back tells us that we're close to the mark. The parking study that we did and the things that we've seen, the development proposals we've seen, let us know that we feel like we're close to that correct mark. And we just want to know if we're not way under it. So. That would be a master site plan application. Now, a master site plan has different required components, and most of you are familiar with those. Orient the building to streets and accesses instead of parking lots where you can. Provide that central unifying feature to do all the right things on those plans. And this is important for developing sites that are developing from nothing. But we think even more so with redevelopment sites, with sites that have been something else before, have been a commercial that has lost its steam or needs to reinvent itself. That's going to be even more important as they look at those plans. And keep that in mind as we move to the next zones and talk about those. I think the thing to keep in mind most above all else with the CMU and VMU is to remember that these are not mixed-use ground-up zones. These are zones that are intended to allow the addition of residential components to otherwise commercial properties, not the other way around. These are not multifamily zones. Okay? And so some of those numbers might not seem, they're not nearly as high as they were at 70 and 80 units the acre, et cetera. But they don't need to be. We have commercially viable properties that just need help, that don't need absolute startovers. So let's talk about the existing zones a little bit. We'll start with the TOD zone up at the north around the track station. This is an interesting area. It's a little bit isolated from some of the other corridors. It has a good access to tracks, and it's close to 40 Fifth South. But grade changes and just the history of the area isolated a little bit. We are not proposing a ton of changes in this zone. One of the biggest ones is that site plan approvals, design review approvals, have never been done through the planning commission in this zone. We're recommending that they do now for the few remaining properties that there are, that the planning commission would review those for design review. We have bumped the residential parking requirement up a little bit. We'll look at a slide in just a second. It shows you that. We did cap the density at 100 units per acre like we did in the MCCD zone. It had previously escaped that cap and had remained unlimited in terms of density. We haven't seen any projects come in there above 80 units per acre. So we didn't, we weren't too concerned about the 100 units per acre. Ground floor commercial, we finally took this opportunity to define that that ought to be a 40-foot depth where it's measured along principal streets. And in this zone, the only principal streets are, I'm just going to use this aerial to show you, Fire Clay and Main Street. Those are the two defined principal zones. This is actually, oddly enough, it's transit-adjacent, transit-oriented, but it's the least commercially dense of our zoning proposals, in terms of requirement, anyway. So.
Can I ask a question about that? If they're going to do outdoor dining, they can set that building back fairly far. How deep can that go from the road?
To 25.
25 feet. So in that case, they only need 15 feet of commercial space inside the building? Is that correct?
No, that's still commercial frontage. They're still required to have commercial there. It just can be further back from the road, but it's still got to be commercial.
With a depth of 40 feet?
Of the depth of 40 feet. Yeah, the depth of 40 feet starts at the beginning of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's a great question, Jake. The depth of 40 feet refers to the building.
Okay, thank you.
That's perfect. See, I don't think about that kind of stuff. But yeah, it's the building. Thank you. Let's see. So that's the TOD. It's the least changed of all the zones.
Can I ask about it then?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just looking at the permitted uses. And I noticed that we still have drive-throughs in there. And yet, based on the build-out of this location, there's not a need for a drive-through. So is there a reason why we even continue to consider it?
In the TOD zone, I'll happily strike it if you want to make that recommendation.
I would make that recommendation.
Zach, make a note. It's true. There's no place in this zone that we're likely going to see a drive-through restaurant come in. There's not enough left to develop, and it's not a necessary thing. So if you'd like to see that struck, I have no problem striking.
Anytime we can see it struck, I'm going to say, please see it, or please strike it.
There are no objections from the rest of the commissioners. I'll strike it.
You'll hear me again in two other moments.
Those ones we can talk about.
Okay.
Let's go on to the MCCD. So this is our downtown area. We're trying in multiple ways and multiple organizations to get development going in this area and see the redevelopment of the downtown. It's been a goal for a long time. The residential parking requirements have been increased a little bit, and they're based on bedroom counts. They're exactly the same as the TOD. So in the next slide, we'll look at those. They are lighter than all of the other zones. The two lightest parking requirements are still in the MCCD and in the TOD. In the MCCD and the TOD, we feel like the mix of uses in the commercial and the access to transit is good enough in the balance of the two zones to create that lesser parking need. Ground floor commercial is still required at 40 feet along principal streets only. That's new. We're doing that in all the zones, trying to recognize that local streets can't support that ground floor commercial requirement. And the residential density is still 100 units per acre on the west side of State Street, and we have reduced it just by 20 on the east side, just in trying to recognize the difficulty in access there, but not to limit the availability of development. Just a quick note, too, and this is as good a place as any to talk about it. These are the standard downtown zone improvements, the benches, the lighting, et cetera. Those are required throughout, the tree grates, et cetera. This is standard public improvement. It's a little narrower because of the existing buildings on the inside where the throughway is. But this furnishing zone is the right width, et cetera. So you're going to see that in all the zones. We're still going to try to get that street frontage. In the VMU and CMU zones, it's a little tougher. So we had to write it to be that new buildings need to meet those requirements and be 15 to 18 feet back or 25 if they're doing outdoor dining because we're going to be trying to keep existing buildings going. In the downtown, we already have that proximity. We'd like to see that maintained. So we don't really have a slide to talk about that. It's just something to be aware of. So to talk about the density and parking, the MCCD and TOD, as you can see, the parking requirements are exactly the same between the two zones. Studio, sorry. Studios are one per one, one per unit, just slightly more than that, 1.05 for one bedrooms, one and a half for two bedrooms, which is typically the one-bedroom requirement in the other zones, and then two and a half for three bedrooms plus. Most of the downtown area, as it develops, in the TOD area, as it's developed, we have not seen proposals for a bunch of three-bedroom and not even a lot of two-bedroom units. Mostly it's studios and ones with a smattering of twos. So you're going to see lower parking requirements overall in that area. Residential densities, we talked about already. So. Again, this is just a better example of that street furnishing zone. We're going to require benches. And I think it's, what did we end up doing, Zach? Two benches per 100 feet of frontage?
One per 100, I think.
One per 100?
No, I think benches are two.
I think it's two, and one garbage can.
So can I ask about those urban design elements?
Yes.
Do we have standards for like the benches? So I'll tell you where I'm coming from with this. Do you see us having standards in place that would allow for hostile architecture? That wouldn't, you know, that would separate a bench physically so that a person couldn't lay down on the bench? I mean, is this something that we have in our regs, or is this just?
Yes and no. What we've said is street standard, Murray standard, street furniture, and we do have that. And it's not this bench, it's one of the previous picture. But we have standard benches that we have them buy and install.
Okay.
So yeah, there wouldn't be hostile architecture. Or European hostile architecture either. Just you all think it's European. Any other questions about that? Okay. That's not working. There we go. The Murray Central Mixed Use. So that moves us on from the MCCD and the TOD zones and the changes that we've requested there or proposed there to the slightly more complicated version of the MU zone that we want to rename the Murray Central Mixed Use. Because we're starting to branch the mixed uses out into other areas of the city, we felt like it was important to give this zone a title that made more sense for it, that tied it sort of verbally to that station. And that's the reason for that change. The residential parking requirements have been increased. We'll look at those. They're based on the bedroom counts like everything else. The densities in this zone, in the larger zone, range from 40 units per the acre to 80 units per acre based on their distance to the station platform as measured from the project's frontage with the right-of-way. So if your back is facing the station platform, and it happens to only be 700 feet from the station, but where people get out of your project and onto the road is 1,000 feet further north, that's where we're measuring your density allowance, because that's what really you should be tied to. In that zone also, ground floor commercial required at 40-feet depths only on principal streets. And those principal streets in the mixed-use zone are going to be Commerce and Vine, 4800 South and 700 West. I don't think I'm missing any. Those are them. So. Let me just move on to a couple of things. To explain the east and west sub-district issue, I included a snip from the general plan's future land use map. This whole area that matches the mixed-use zone that was applied used to match that zone. In 2017, we removed a large portion of that, especially specifically west of the freeway and actually the west side of Commerce and west of the freeway, from the future land use designation of mixed use, recognizing that it has some significant challenges to distance for walking, pedestrian activity, et cetera, to the station, and also with providing commercial. There aren't as good of accesses to the heavier traffic streets. We do have a collector in Seventh West, et cetera. But again, Vine and Seventh West, and these are collectors, but they have their own difficulties. We don't have good provision for on-street parking on them, for example. It's not a great area for mixed-use redevelopment. It's not impossible, but it's not as ideal as the others. So in doing that, we suggested in this proposal that we create the Mixed Use West Subdistrict, west of the freeway, and the Mixed Use East Subdistrict with everything else that's in the mixed-use zone currently, east of the freeway, as opposed to just removing them from the zone entirely. So you'll see a lot of changes in that mixed-use area that was removed from the general plan based on that fact. It's not ideal for mixed use in our view. It wasn't in 2017. But we do feel like there could be successful mixed uses there if they're able to lower their densities and in conjunction with lowering their commercial requirements, et cetera. So one big change was just, for example, say that it's only on principal streets. There are a lot of local streets in the Mixed Use West area that are very large, and they create some large frontages that create large commercial requirements. But the principal streets, not so much. I want to talk to you about the densities and in conjunction with what we just talked about in creating those two districts. You'll see in these two tables a little difference. So the residential density at 1/8 of a mile, the way we talked about measuring from the project's frontage with the street to the station platform, 1/8 of a mile is about a block, 80 units per acre. So when you're real close, like Murray Crossing, et cetera, you're going to get that 80 units per acre allowance. At a quarter of a mile, 65. At a half a mile, 50. And more than a half a mile, 40 units the acre, our bottom end. And in the west sub-district, 40 units the acre, period, as the base density. If the measured walking distance from any project to the station platform is less than a half a mile, we want to reduce that base density to 40 units per acre.
Is there, so I see a big difference in the east and west sub-districts. Is there a reason that the west sub-district just stays at 40 units? I mean, do we?
Rather than taking it further down or?
Taking it further down, yes, correct. Especially as you get further west and really butt up against.
Yes. I think, yes, we could have taken it even further down. But we wanted to leave it at the base density of 40 and allow the projects or the properties, the developers themselves, to opt to lower their density in order to lower their commercial. So when you're doing 40 units per acre, you do our standard commercial requirement. And that means you're believing in your ability to do kind of our lowest level of mixed-use standard zone, 40 units per acre with the normal commercial requirement. Down from there is what, so let me just move to this, commercial requirements, reduction of commercial. In the east, you can reduce your commercial, too, because we do have some areas that are challenging, that are a long walking distance from the station and are far down, even though their collector road's farther down them. So we allowed a little bit of reduction down to 60% with some standards. The MCMU West, we can allow all the way down to 30% of the requirement. So a 70% reduction in what we figure as your required commercial. But that should come at a cost. Either you have your density to 20 units, or you do these other things. And actually, in this case, you're doing two of those. To get all the way to 70% reduction in your commercial, you have the number of your density of units, or you do both of these, or you do that, and one of these, or you do two. So what we were talking about in the work session, Travis, one of these for the, this is kind of the two tiers.
Okay.
The normal reductions and the severe reductions. And the standards have just been up, and you do one or two on both of those to get to it. So it should be very difficult to get all the way down to 30% of your required commercial. It shouldn't be easy. And it's not just intended to be, it's not intended to be a deterrent. It's intended to make up for the lack of commercial in another way, to create a more vibrant property, to create other pedestrian connections, whatever you can. If you don't feel like you can do the commercial, if you don't think that bears out in your market studies, then give us the stuff that makes the neighborhood cool anyway and do 30% of the commercial.
So in this particular area, Galleria Drive is an underutilized road. And there's not a lot of connectivity in this area. So if I come at you and say I own that piece of property, what are you doing to increase connectivity for both the pedestrian and for, you know, the automobiles that are going to be there?
Right. As yet, I don't know. That would be the challenge of the development, to show us how it works. And especially if, so your commercial requirement is still going to be significant because you have frontage on 700 West. Sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. Then I've taken it out of this presentation. But we have standards in all of these zones for block length limitations, too, providing mid-block.
Is it 300 feet?
So any interior roads are going to have those mid-block crossing requirements or breaking up the blocks or whatever it may be along Galleria, and frankly, everywhere else, too. So there should be better connectivity, at least on the site. I understood your question differently to be how are we connecting it out to the principal streets better? And I don't know.
It's both, honestly.
That's why we've allowed for them to reduce that commercial density, or that commercial requirement, but only based on other things. So.
Can I ask a question? I'm not sure if now is the best time to ask this.
Anytime, you're welcome.
So if I'm in a mixed-use zone currently, that zone is going away.
No. If you're in a current mixed-use zone, it's staying. It might be changing significantly, but it's staying a mixed-use zone. If you're in this one, it's changing more significantly if you're west of the freeway.
So we will still have a zone called Mixed Use Development District?
Nope. You'll have a zone called the Murray Central Mixed Use, but it's the same.
Okay, a different name change, which to me would be different. Name changes changing and all the other stuff's changing. So I would consider that different. So. So if I'm east, I'm automatically adopted into this east sub-district?
Yeah.
Is that how that works? Okay.
Yep. You don't have to do anything special to become east, and you can't.
That's just what I am.
You have to be east of the freeway.
So city council approves this the next day. I'm MCMU East Subdistrict if I'm on the east side. Okay.
This is not a John Hughes movie. You cannot change your status, no matter how good you dance. Rest of the freeway, MCMU West.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for the way my brain works. But yeah, it's a great question. And it does feel, it feels very different probably to everybody but me because I'm looking at, it's still 17146, and I'm just renaming it and changing all the standards.
Sure.
If someone owns the land there, they can still do pretty much the same things, just with more restrictions and guidance.
Right. And there's still a lot of, and we've had, we've had new buildings built in the mixed-use zone in the area that we're talking about, in the Mixed Use West Subdistrict that's going to be a sub-district. We've had new buildings as recently as a few months ago that aren't mixed use, that are just industrial buildings going up because we have some allowances in this zone and the uses we've capped. They've done just kind of flex space buildings. That's not uncommon in this area. But yeah, I think. But yeah, I think Jake, you're the large, the first, the beginning of your question is, do I have to do something to be in the MCMU East or West? And no, you're, you're in it now as mixed use. You're going to be in the MCMU either east or west. Exactly. Not for these.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. That's a great question. Um.
Can I ask, sorry, just another follow-up. So the sub districts are specified by code and so I can't go and apply to be, I mean, I can't change it. There's no way to change it without changing the actual code.
To change the text.
Yeah, okay.
Come back and amend the text and say, I don't think there ought to be a West District. I want that changed.
Yeah, okay.
And see if we can get the planning commission and city council to agree.
Thank you.
That's exactly, that's a great question.
And that could, that
Yeah.
Couldn't be, well, could it be piecemealed or not? Meaning you had the whole designated area and I own this corner of the property and I wanted to argue against it or I own a piece in the middle.
I would stringently argue against anybody being able to do that, but I would process their application because it's their right. If they want to ask for that, they could ask for that. We'd have to evaluate it and I'd recommend against it.
It'd be more likely they'd ask for conditional use or some sort.
Well, conditional use wouldn't save you from those requirements. If they can't operate within the parameters of that West District or can't make a project work, then they would probably ask for some kind of amendment to either what we're requiring or their being in the West District in the first place. So.
We're on the parking slide here. So can we just talk a little bit about live work units?
Yeah.
And can you just clarify, um, you know, parking provided for live work units must meet both the residential and commercial requirements of this chapter.
Right.
So let's say I do a small project with five live work units.
Great.
So what, what are, how is my commercial requirement going to be figured out?
I would calculate your ground floor because under the live work standards that we've written in, in these codes, your ground floor, other than maybe your garage that you're parking in for yourself, has to be the commercial component. We're not allowing live works that are lateral. So your ground floor is the commercial space. So we would just measure it. If your ground floor is 1,200 square feet, it's 1,200 square feet of commercial against the commercial standard.
Do you see that as a viable size for a live work unit?
For live works, yeah. The, some of them, they're, some of them are very small. Now it would depend. Some of them are larger and people could propose larger if they want. I see most of them being, what we've seen in your, so thus far, townhomes, except in Salt Lake where there are lofts, but we've seen townhomes with the bottom floor being fitted out for commercial, having 12-foot ceilings and commercial grade utilities, et cetera. So yeah, I think it could be done that way.
Somehow in my mind, I'm thinking it's more like 800 square feet or, you know, 750 square feet. 1,200 seems large to me. So I was a little taken aback by that.
It, it might be smaller than that. And, and if it's viable, then, then great. But we would calculate it that way, whether it was 12 or 800 square feet, we'd calculate the square footage of it excluding the garage and require you, your commercial component in your larger project would have to meet that because the townhomes can't be your full contingent of commercial. They can't fill your full requirement for commercial. So there'd be other commercial to consider as well. So it would be part of that whole moving structure, as would the bedrooms in the townhome units. Townhome units are going to have a higher residential component structure too, because they're going to be three or four bedrooms usually. Maybe the live work ones will be two bedroom units. We don't know, but we would calculate them separately. You, you have this many bedrooms, so that's your residential requirement and you have this much commercial on your ground floor. So calculating it.
But if I come off of a non-principal street again and build my live work units on a non-principal street, is there a reason why we would discount on-street parking in that scenario versus actual physical parking lot associated with the project?
If it's on the street and it's a non-principal street, I think you have to make a distinction between non-principal and just an interior access street. So let's say you got a small project, 100 units and 20 of these, 20 of our townhomes and 10 of those are live works. If there's on-street parking and not street, but let me go back to a slide. In this scenario, these parking stalls here are on an interior road, an interior accessway. This isn't even really a private street. It's just, we force them to make it look like one through our design standards. These parking stalls are all included in their commercial required parking.
Okay.
Out here on, if they had, and it's ninth east, so they don't, but if they had on-street parking on the public street or ninth east, they would not be included.
Okay.
But on the interior accesses, we, we include those in account. So in your, in your example, possibly, yeah, they would be counted out in front of them and to do a live work without any on-street parking in front of it would be a dumb idea.
Correct.
So hopefully they wouldn't do it. And we, and likely they'd be on interior streets where we'd be counting it. So.
I was trying to get my mind around live work when you introduced these ideas two weeks ago because initially it felt to me like, well, why? What's the benefit? Because just buy a condo upstairs and have your, your business downstairs and do they need to be connected? The only difference is the stairwells between the two. But I guess the benefit is somewhat the parking count and your private parking.
Yeah. And they're very small units. Not a lot of people want, like Travis is saying, a 650 or 700, 800 square foot office. But if it's my office and I live upstairs and I'm an insurance agent and the world that we live in, I hardly have any visitors anyway. Maybe it works for me.
Or you have a single-chair salon.
Yeah.
That someone just comes and, and I mean, it's your very much a neighborhood business.
The two live work units that I can think of off the top of my head that we have that are active in Fireclay are an insurance office and a salon. So next time you're looking for new hairstylists, go see Jeremy in Fireclay. He's great. Everybody says. Let's see. Is that, does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
I think so.
Okay. So the east-west sub districts, the parking, so that's, that's how we would calculate it. You have to meet both. And then again, these, these spaces in the MCMU zone, the east sub district, that's the east side. So it's going to have better access to transit and maybe more commercial associated for joint use parking to, to alleviate some of those problems. So one and 1.2 for one-bedroom units. Again, that's 1.5 in both the CMU and the VMU. But it's less than that in the downtown and the TOD. 1.25, 1.5 for two-bed units and two and a half for three-plus. And then this MCMU West, again, it's, these are identical to the VMU parking requirements because it most likely aligns with that kind of zone, with that kind of end result. Reduction of commercial in the MCMU. Again, this is, this is like the VMU, but it's more, it's more complicated. Reduction of commercial in the MCMU east side. There are things you can do, but they're, they're more limited. On the west side, we're allowing, I'm sorry, they're not, they're not more limited. They're just, there's fewer of them. We only allow you on the east side to go down to 60%, but again, on that west side, you can go all the way down to 30. We already did this, didn't we? I'm sorry. Coming back around. Uh, again, it shouldn't be easy to get all the way down, but it should be possible. And with that, I didn't realize that was at the end, but we're, we are recommending that you move this forward to the, to the council with a recommendation of approval. And there are, it's, I know it's a lot to, to bite off, but we do kind of anticipate that this is a good first step. As, as far as staff's concerned, with the TLUR that we had in place and the timing, we felt like this was a reasonable response and one that could get us moving forward again. And as we see problems or challenges or other things we ought to do, we will include those things too and bring them back to us modifications to these zones or as other standards. But we do see this as a good first step and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Can we talk about, um, so we're saying that you can have 300 feet per block. So I could have 270 feet of building.
Sure.
At any given point in time. Do we really think that having just 50% of that as blank wall is appropriate for, for something of that mass?
That's, that's a good question.
I, I mean, I don't know that someone's going to come in with a project that large.
No, I, I wouldn't think so. And some of, some of the individual standards that are in our other zones, I have not necessarily included here. For, for example, in, in the mixed use zone, there's already language that says you can't have more than 50 feet without some sort of break or change. In the MCCD, it's 30. I haven't included that in the VMU and CMU as a standard for the, for the building wall. But our general, our general architectural standards, we might want to include there too. That's a good, that's a good point.
Okay.
Um, Jared.
Easy inclusion to make. I just create a subheading and put it in. So.
Jared, the permitted uses?
Uh huh.
I had a couple of questions. That's a good question. I don't know.
Don't say all, pick one.
I'm looking at the CMU right now.
Okay.
But I think it's very, very similar in the VMU.
It is.
So, um, there's just a couple of questions I have about like, um, 2510 household furniture. The last thing it lists is no outside storage, which I, sounds great. I like that. Especially how it's designed. I'm not sure where you put outside, anything outside without being in a public right-of-way or a street or sidewalk. But why don't, if we say it there, why aren't we saying it on 2300 manufacturer, manufacturer apparel? Why don't we say no outside storage there? You know, the one below, commercial printing, we say no odors, business hours, blah, blah. But why don't we say no outside storage there? Why don't we say that in multiple places? Why is it only for household furniture?
That's a good question and I can't really answer.
In a CMU, it's page two in the CMU proposed code. It's the beginning of the proposed code.
So it's 2,300.
I mean, I just think no, no outside storage is a good idea. Why put it only on one?
Which is the one that you're saying it ought to be in and it's not? The?
It should be in the 2,300 and 2740 as well, I believe. And maybe even in greeting cards and pottery, jewelry, jewelry, I don't know. And all the way down the list. It says no odors, no odors, no odors, but it doesn't say no outside storage.
Well, I can only answer by saying that we must be hyper-obsessed with odors. I have not, the, the use lists are the thing that we haven't made the, the lightest changes to. Mostly useless. We haven't monkeyed with very much at all, but I would be happy to include no outside storage in those. In mixed use zones in general, for example, in the mixed use zone, you don't get to have outside storage. Period. None of your, none of your, none of your uses are allowed that way. We could easily make that a requirement here and it's probably appropriate.
It's unconditional.
Go ahead. Yeah, please.
I think, so the standard land use code is an antiquated, it's old and equated. Thank you. Thing that was used in the seventies for about five years and then it all got abandoned, but we still use it, except for us and Provo. But, um, so everything that's in the 2000s is a manufacturing industry. So when you see this, it's manufacturing household furniture. So by no outside storage, we're really saying you're not going to manufacture your household furniture outside. Where a lot of these other ones, so like 2,300 manufacturing apparel, we're making the assumption that most people don't manufacture apparel outside. That's usually sewn inside, you know.
Or sweatshops.
Or store, you know, tech, that, what he just said.
But by the same token, it wouldn't cost them, and if you have that be a blanket statement.
Yeah.
You could put on a nice day, do your greeting cards outside if you wanted to.
Yeah. In the rain too, or your floral arrangement.
I don't know the difference.
Yeah. So I'm just giving you.
The greeting card folks.
I'm just giving you an example of what that means. So those 2000s means that it's manufacturing and that's where, yeah.
Does anybody, would anybody on the commission have concerns if we made the same kind of statement that we have in the mixed use zone? And the MCCD frankly, that you're not allowed to store anything outside regardless of whatever other. I think the language is notwithstanding whatever other rule, blah, blah, blah. You can't store anything outside. I can add that to the other zones.
I have no reservations.
We'll make the addition.
And then I had another question on the next page, page four, conditional uses. So 3,500, it says a list, a bunch of things, some of which are redundant because it's on the land use permitted uses, meaning 3,500 says photographic, which is addressed, I, I think addressed to 6220 over all the permitted uses. And then it says optic goods and watches, like watches, I think is addressed in 6493 in the permitted uses. Optical goods, I think that's addressed to the professional services, 6,500.
Professional services are different than that 30. Again, that standard land use code is weird and one day we will be rid of it. But for, for now, 3,500 are a different standard. It's a different relationship to those photographic services. 60, the 6,000 are professional services. So that would be like where you're going to your camera shop to get your stuff cleaned or to whatever. The other would be like photo processing in 3,500, et cetera. So they are in different categories.
The difference in the watches and clocks as well.
I guess. So servicing your watch and stuff is different.
What about the CMU where it has pottery on conditional uses and pottery in the approved? They're both 3,259 and 3,250.
That's probably just a good catch where we repeated it. Because I don't know why it would be in both.
Then that same chart, we see conditional uses in the CMU area, 6111. So it says windows and lanes may not be located between the street and building front unless allowed by an approved master site plan. I was wondering if we should say anything in there about hindering pedestrian travel between the buildings.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the statements that's there in our, in our master site plan requirements, it talks about allowing, only allowing drive-throughs when they, between the building and the street, when they're otherwise meeting the goals of that zone. So if it was found to be hindering pedestrian activity, we would find it in violation of that and force them to move.
And, and just for the record, since we're talking about drive-throughs, you know, I would be in favor of not including drive-throughs in any of the mixed use zones. But I just, I'm on the record.
What's your reasoning for that? Tell me your reasoning.
Because it, it's automobile oriented. The whole point of this is that we are pedestrian oriented. And so I, I'm, there's plenty of places for drive-throughs. They're in the city. I, but it's really, it's to get people out of their cars and be able to walk around their neighborhood and not constantly be dodging an automobile pulling out of a drive-through distracted with a cheeseburger in their hand.
I found his comment real quick. And at first I went, but at the moment he said it, I was thinking about how we repeatedly talked about, um, streets that front, I mean, buildings that front major streets and corridors and how they need to front the major corridors for business. But that keep, every time we talk about that, it reminds me of Sugar House area by, um, Barnes and Nobles and Chick-fil-A's further up the street. That area, um, I feel like, and maybe it's because it hasn't met, met max capacity yet and people, but it looks like it's set up facing the street. So people walk in, no one uses those doors. Everyone goes to park lot, parks and walks in the back. You never see anyone on that sidewall walking in those doors.
And hopefully over time that changes for them and for us. But to, to kind of, to, to that point, let me just make one quick reference to this same plan because it's a good example of it. We, we allowed there to be a drive-through, for example, and this is just an example. We don't know what the final site plan will look like. But in this case, we could make the argument that these ought to all be facing ninth east. And what we really want, because ninth east is a large corridor with a lot of people driving 40 miles and 45 miles an hour on it. What we really want is for them to have a relationship to the street at least, to look like they're part of the street still. And that seemed like, that's challenged by this drive-through. That's what Travis is talking about. The point is to get people out of their cars. When you facilitate them with the drive-through, that's one, step one. When you make their drive-through easy to use, step two, it's just, you know, you're attracting people. But I think with the VMU and CMU especially, the reality is that we're looking again at commercial sites that are adding residential. So we have to be able to accommodate those drive-throughs. What we wanted to do in the master site plan requirement is force people to look at how they're doing them. And in this particular instance, it made sense to allow them facing or allow them to wrap the building on ninth east rather than put them in the, put them in a position where they're separating the, the people that live on the site and we really want to attract to those businesses from those businesses. So we opted for that in this case instead. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay. So I'll just go back. So with that, I, I'm going to go back to the, the pottery thing because I looked it up on the standard land use code. So 3,250 in general is pottery and related uses. Now I'll, I'll just give you a couple of examples of these because some of them are great. Porcelain electrical supplies. How do you say that word? Vitreous?
Vitreous.
Vitreous china table and kitchen articles. So those would be conditional uses if you were manufacturing those kinds of things. However, 3,259 is other pottery and related products not elsewhere classified. So, and that says includes garden pottery, crockery, et cetera. So, so that's kind, so this, it's hippie accessories really. So the 3,259 being a permitted use for that elsewhere classified is for smaller hand trades where the larger category of it is under a conditional use permit. Again, the fact that you guys are looking at those land use tables and making those questions is really great because it's just as confusing to us. You should see us when we get a business license and we're like, I don't know if it fits this or not. So that, that's what you get. So.
Well, I, I think I would like to go back to the, uh, drive-through, but I think you could just take them all away and leave the, what is it? Other, other retail services or something and just, you know, just put that one in and.
Have to be specified.
Yeah. Because that doesn't include almost everything, but.
Yeah. We, we feel that way about most of the categories in the standard land use code. It's part of our.
Yeah.
And we'd like to see it simplified. We just, we haven't had the bandwidth to do that. We'll probably have it next year.
So back to the drive-through thing. I just had a couple of comments on that.
Sure.
I think it's important to remember that these are going to be potentially large complexes where I understand that we don't want to have a drive-through where pedestrians would be entering the property, but there would be a lot, there could potentially be lots of buildings where you will have.
Was the comment made, was the comment made just for the MCCD district or for all?
I mean, well, in my perfect world, it would be all, but, but I realize we don't live in the perfect world and the two new districts, you know, very much to your point, they are already in existing commercial districts. So I don't think it makes sense to get rid of them. But, but let's say the MCCD, right? That is, that is our core downtown. That is where we want people out of their automobiles and walking. And I would like to see it in the TOD, the MCCD, the, you know, I mean personally, but, and I realize that I have radical views on, on walking. So I, I appreciate that.
I, I just wanted to follow up with, I'm not a coffee drinker, but, um, on Redwood Road, this is not in Star City, but on Redwood. this is not in Star City, but on Redwood Road and over by the Walmart, over by 54 South, on the west side of the street, it's not a mixed-use zone, but it's kind of set up like a mixed-zone would be. And you have Starbucks that has done a very good job of, you know, directing their traffic, you know, behind the building where people wouldn't be walking necessarily. And if you go to any major downtown, a lot of these mixed-use zones, you do have Starbucks or coffee places where people are driving, grabbing their coffee. And if they're set up properly, I think they could be set up where they're not interfering with people walking.
That's, that's a bad point. And I would, let me follow that up with, it's kind of exactly the point, where with what I've been reading about adding retail or adding residential to retail and bringing mixed-use into more suburban environments, and State Street and the MCCD is our downtown, but it is State Street and 40,000 cars a day. So we not only, in that instance, just like in this instance, if that's a coffee shop, we, we probably want that coffee shop in order to succeed to have at least the option to show us a way that it can do a drive-through without fouling everything up, at least in that State Street corridor, and certainly in the CMU and the VMU areas. But they got to do it without fouling up the pedestrians, because you, what you want in the ideal world is for them still to be able to access that vehicle traffic and get their money out of their pockets. And hopefully one day they stop and go to some other part, too. But you want to make sure that the people that live in that project and that mixed-use project can easily get to that coffee shop, because they should be their core customers.
And one of the biggest impediments to the MCCD as it is now is that State Street is a 45 mile an hour road. If that was a 20, 20 or 25 mile an hour road, and there were easy pedestrian crossings there, that would be an entirely different frontage. But the reality is it's state highway, and that's not going to change. And, but it's, it's.
Yeah, I think having a, having a drive-through on State Street obviously is not going to happen, but having one on the backside of that zoning, I think could definitely happen.
I think so. That's great, great discussion, you guys. Anything else in here we have to talk about?
Well, since we're MCCD, as we've been talking about allowed uses, I would also recommend that, you know, general construction services, if you're already there, great, but honestly, we should be building this for, for humans and not for, you know, construction businesses and things like that.
Any concerns with construction services not being part of the MCCD?
Is, construction services, would that be a contractor having just offices there?
A contractor's office would fall in that category, yeah. So if.
So I think you would want to allow that.
An office without storage. I, I don't, I don't want like, you know, this is a shop, and we keep all the, all the stuff there. If you want to have.
If you want to have your corporate offices for late construction in our downtown, absolutely.
No problem with that whatsoever.
We can modify the use as it's allowed so that it's office-only. It'll be 60 something.
Yeah, 6600, I believe. 6600.
Does it sound like now office?
It sure does. No, no material storage. Thank you. Yeah. Oh, it's perfect. Just the way you wrote it. Good job. Strong word. That was fast.
We knew that all along, Travis. We were just testing you. Okay. Anything else we got to talk about?
Let me just make sure, oh.
How long, how many months did you work on this?
Six.
I have got some questions for you, right? So you can show off all of, everything you know.
Good. If no one ever asks me anything about this again, I'm fine. Because I think, I have this notion that the next year of my life is going to involve some tweaks. I just believe that'll be the case. Six was pretty fast to try to get this research and written, but we had that TLUR, and we needed to get what we could arranged.
I guess one more thing I would just talk about with, you know, we started talking about addressing, you know, the e-infrastructure and electric vehicles and having charging stations for that. You know, at some point in time, I think we do need to consider also including something for bicycles and bicycle charging stations, because more and more people are whizzing past my house at 30 miles an hour without pedaling their little bicycle.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'm not saying that we should subsidize everybody charging their thing, but from time to time, it's not a bad idea.
That's a great conversation. We started having it during, not about boost bikes, but about EV charging stations being added to the absolute parking requirements. We shied away from it in this round, but I think that's one that we might bring back. This is, we wanted to have a better handle on what percentage would make sense, and we don't have that yet, and we're out of time. But we'll be coming back to you probably with at least some kind of suggestion about EV stations in these, in these residential parking garages that are going to have 300 and 400 spaces. It would make sense to have a certain percentage of them be outfitted for EV, so people can park their car overnight.
So I have electric cars, so I should know more than I'm about to say, but I believe that it's kind of an industry within itself, because most stations charge you.
Yeah.
So these facilities are putting in parking lots will want, at some point, be approached by and want to benefit from that income or.
Yeah.
Honestly.
I just don't know enough about it yet to propose.
Honestly, you know, for folks like me on the, on the east side of Murray, we get no benefit from Murray Power. And quite frankly, Murray Power, they should be providing a service to the community. And, and, you know, they make enough money. They do okay. And it's all right if maybe they're the ones responsible for, for doing this, at least in the civic buildings and some of these larger areas and.
That's how everybody feels that doesn't have Utopia.
I think that's fair. I, yeah, I know lots of people that don't have Utopia. It's fantastic. It will come.
I have it now, so I can't complain much. I didn't have it for a long, long time.
We were, we were actually just today lamenting the fact that we don't have, we have a car, a division car that we use, and I needed to go somewhere, and Jay had it in Eagle Mountain today, and I thought, wouldn't it be great if we had a planning division boost bike?
Yeah.
Just hopped on that. So there's my pitch for next year's budget.
Our department should be plugging it left and right.
There you go. Anyway, that, any other, any other questions? I'm happy to, whatever. Okay. Thanks, you guys.
Tremendous work.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you.
And you can have the next six months of your life back.
Okay, well, with that presentation, do I need to open this for public comment? Yes. So I will open this meeting for public comment regarding this agenda item. And seeing no one here, I will close the public comment. Oh, do you think anyone emailed in? Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can leave it open and just double check. Good call.
Well, we're checking. I am just going to say thank you to Jared for his hard work and dedication over the last five months as we've been on this endeavor. It's been, it's been no small task.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of coordination and a lot of reading and research, and really appreciate what Jared's done with us. And especially, there's a lot of expectations out there that we've been trying to meet between, you know, city council, developers, landowners, the community, the public, internal staff. And it's been, I think, in a lot of ways, a very fun process, but, you know, certainly, if we had to do it, of, the best, the best way to do it would not to be with a six-month time crunch. And, you know, in the end, what, five different zones essentially that we're dealing with. So just wanted Jared to know that he's appreciated, his hard work is recognized, and he can go home as soon as we're all done here. He doesn't have to stay tonight.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment portion and just bring it up to the commissioners for any discussion. I just, yeah, I would love to echo what Melinda said. It was a huge, huge task that you took on in a short amount of time, and you did a really amazing job. And, and those presentations, what I liked about, even when I was looking over and reading through the zone, there's so much I don't understand, but every time that you've presented it, I do feel like I can follow all of the ideas, all of the laid-out purposes as we understand them of these zones for right now. I do feel like I have a grasp on, on all those things because of how you've presented it so well to us. So great job.
I'll just say, because, you know, as commissioners, we often get beat up over projects that come forward. This is where the, the public needs to really have participated, because this is where the rules are made, and this is where the real meat and potato discussions talk about and the philosophy of what we want to see with our community. So those of you that are watching from home, recognize that when these, these items come up, this is the time for you to be here, because this is the time where you have the loudest voice.
And you'll have the opportunity at the city council meeting also to, to have more public comment on, on these zones. And I think especially because mixed-use has been so controversial in the city, a lot of people do have opinions. So, you know, at the city council meeting, is, this is your chance to voice your opinions on these districts or on these uses and, and these zones. So, yeah.
I mean, we saw changes made on the fly in our conversation, and public comment would have probably further shifted some of those.
And my comment is that this is really excellent, Jared. I think there's really good and better opportunities now for development in these areas with the changes that, that have been made. So I think that gives Murray a lot more diversity in, in how it can develop in the coming years.
Any other discussion or will we entertain a motion?
Yes, the public comment portion. Yeah, no, thank you for, thank you for checking on that, because it's a good chance I didn't.
I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendments to chapters 17.146, mixed-use, 17.168, transit-oriented development, 17.170, Murray City Center District, and the addition of proposed chapters 17.162, centers mixed-use, and 17.164, village mixed-use as presented in the staff report.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendments to chapter 17.146, mixed-use, 17.168, transit-oriented development, 17.170, Murray City Center District, and the addition of proposed chapters 17.162, centers mixed-use, and 17.164, village mixed-use as presented in the staff. Is there a second on that motion?
I can second that.
Okay. This second by Commissioner Malkovich. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Thank you.
We can take a vote.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
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 Yes. So motion passes, and it will be approval forwarded to the city council. So I'm excited to hear, yeah, on Tuesday, what, what they say and how they vote. So is there any other business for the commission?
Is that a good one?
I know, we'll miss you, Zach.
It makes it sound like I was at Flanders Field. I was at Tripp Lane. I was, yeah.
I've been to Flanders Field.
Just a quick update, the city council, the city council, was it last, last week? On the 6th of July, had a meeting, they did consider using the, the use of eminent domain, the use of condemnation at Tripp Lane to, to push the road through to connect. The, the idea, the, the, wasn't an application, but the idea of taking it up failed, died for lack of emotion. So for all intents and purposes, that idea is dead, and we'll be accepting a subdivision, a final subdivision from the neighbor works group that includes a cul-de-sac. And we'll still have utility connections, et cetera. That's all being worked out.
That's disappointing.
But we will, we'll be, when you guys approved them for preliminary, just by way of remembering this all, when you approved them for preliminary, you told them to come back with either, a final that either had a cul-de-sac option or to come back with the road through because they knew they could get condemnation from the city council. They were not able to get that, so we'll be bringing you pretty soon a subdivision with the cul-de-sac. We're not extremely happy about it, but that's what it is.
That's too bad.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
That's too bad.
It is too bad. Well, I agree as a staffer, but I gave it a good try. So Zach had some updates.
Just so I get it on the record, too. You guys have the next planning commission meeting off, so there's nothing for, I think it's the 5th of August. So just be prepared for a very large 19th. So far, we have three applications, and there could be a lot more. So just be prepared for that.
Do you see a floodgate of mixed-use projects coming forward?
They've got a lot, they've got a lot to sort out.
Yeah.
Before they.
Yeah, no, I would, but, yeah, we have some, we have some big projects coming along, so.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah.
No meeting on the 5th?
No meeting on the 5th. We canceled that because of the primary elections.
Yeah, so the primaries are on August 6th, and the voting machines have to be locked away and can't be, and it's in here. And they have to be locked away. Nobody's allowed near the voting machines. You've probably heard on the news, voting machines craziness. So since they have to be locked up, we've, we canceled the.
I have a horrible idea. It is horrible upfront, but we've been talking, because, only because we've been talking for months about having a training. We've been putting the training off because we, you guys are doing a wonderful job with working on other things. That would have been a great day to do a training. It's a horrible idea only because there's not enough time to prepare.
It's not a horrible idea. It's a good idea.
If we had thought of it weeks ago. Yeah. If I'd thought of it weeks ago.
And Zach will be gone. This is a good time for Zach to be gone, because you guys don't have a meeting.
To train for.
Just land use.
Yeah, because I'm untrained, and so I'm just winging it. Yeah.
You're winging it. You're winging it.
So that, now that we're talking about training, I was thinking the other day about the planning conferences. Haven't been to one in a while. Will you guys let us know when opportunities come?
The next one coming up is in September, September 8th and 9th in Kettles.
How do you know the answer to everything I ask? You didn't even hesitate and look it up.
Not doing much other than.
September 8th and 9th?
It's like it's his job.
No, I actually know that one because we were talking about, this is a good way to break people. We, we were talking about running a workshop, and we didn't, we didn't feel like we could. So, I guess it's close by Kettles, though. We didn't feel like we need to get something interesting happening, ready enough in time for something to propose something. So we gave the option.
Is that a daytime or is it an evening?
8th and 9th, I think it's during the day. It's, does it go down to 4:30 or something?
Yeah, it's like 8:00 or 9:00.
So we can, we can look at, if you, if you have interest in going to that, the 8th and 9th, let us know, and we'll see what we've got left in the training budget that we could reduce that.
Could you at least send us information on that to look at it?
It's got an answer, Travis.
They're, they're fun. So if you have the time, it would be a good opportunity to refresh your memories about things or have your team.
And introduce you.
It's a great topic. I thought about it forever.
Most importantly, it introduces you to the, the evil side of planners in general.
Rainy side.
That's pretty dark.
Okay. Is there any further business? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:18 PM?
I second it.
And we are adjourned.